Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join in a moment of silence for fallen servicemen. So, welcome everyone. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with the Oaths of Office and Ratification of our Fire Chiefs. If the Fire Chiefs can come to the front to join us. I state your name.
I, Matthew Perrin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will protect and defend.
That I will protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
I will abide by the bylaws and code.
I will abide by the bylaws and code.
And general orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
And general orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
And that I will at all times.
Carry out the duties assigned to me as.
Carry out the duties assigned to me as.
An officer of the Garden City Fire Department.
An officer of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
And that I will at all times.
Strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care.
Strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
By the powers vested in me, as the village mayor of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly installed.
Chief Perrin, if you could just stay for a minute or two. Mayor Flanagan and I had the privilege of attending the Nassau County Fire Commissioners Award Ceremony last night at the Nassau County Legislature Building. Chief Perrin earned the Bronze Medal of Value, Valor, I'm sorry, Bronze Medal of Value. And I would like to tell you the reason why he got it. On the morning of July 25th, 2022, at approximately 12:30 a.m., Chief of Department Matthew Perrin was flagged down by civilian, indicating they heard a car crash in the general area of Cathedral Ave. and First Street. Chief Perrin investigated the area and discovered an overturned passenger vehicle on fire, with the driver still trapped inside the vehicle. The vehicle was pinned against a tree. Chief Perrin notified Nassau County Fire Communications of the situation he had, and grabbed his halogen and extinguishers in an attempt to control the fire while freeing the victim. At this time, the Garden City Police Department arrived on scene, as well to assist with fire extinguishment, while Chief Perrin cut away at the windshield while using his halogen. He was able to cut down the windshield, removing the vehicle, removing the victim from the vehicle. One aided bell was placed in the hands of NYU Longone Emergency Medical Services. Chief Perrin suffered some minor lacerations to his hand from glass and debris. He was seen by EMS and did not require hospitalization. Engine 142, 143, and Heavy Rescue 146 arrived on scene and extinguished the fire shortly after. Because of Chief Perrin's actions at the time, the person inside the vehicle survived. Without that, they would not have. So I think we all owe Chief Perrin a round of applause.
I state your name.
I, James Toner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will protect and defend.
That I will protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
The laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
Further, I will abide by the bylaws and code.
Further, I will abide by the bylaws and code.
And general orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
And general orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
And that I will at all times.
Carry out the duties assigned to me as.
Carry out the duties assigned to me as.
An officer of the Garden City Fire Department.
An officer of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
And that I will at all times.
Strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care.
Strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
By the powers vested in me, as the mayor of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly installed. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yep, I guess I'll do next. Okay, we're next go to swear in, and let me get that here. The line officers and the corporate officers. So, I think we'll, okay, we'll do it one. It might be tough to do one by one. Let's do the line officers first, and then we'll do the corporate officers second, if that's okay? Okay. We have Captain Engine Company Matthew Carroll, we have Captain Truck Company Connor Sprott, we have First Lieutenant Engine Company Robert Carpenter, we have First Lieutenant Truck Company Christopher Mayer, we have Second Lieutenant Engine Company Joseph Philippus, and we have Second Lieutenant Truck Company Terrence Randall. Hey, gentlemen. State your name. Do so solemnly swear that I will protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of New York, and the laws and ordinance of the villages of Garden, Village of Garden City. Further, I will abide by the bylaws and code and general orders of the Garden City Fire Department, and that I will at all times carry out the duties assigned to me as an officer of the Garden City Fire Department, and that I will at all times strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care to the best of my ability, so help me God. By the powers vested in me, as Fire Commissioner of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly installed. Congratulations. We next have the corporate officers, and we have Secretary Michael Reel, if he's here. Michael Reel. Real, I'm sorry. It was easier to say real, but, uh, real. Treasurer Robert Colb, Assistant Secretary Ryan Moody, Assistant Treasurer Donald Byrne, First Battalion Delegate Edward Moran. Okay, well, I guess it's just your turn, so make it easy. State your name. Do so solemnly swear that I will protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
Laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
Further, I will abide by the bylaws and code.
Further, I will abide by the bylaws and code.
And general orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
General orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
Will at all times.
Carry out the duties assigned to me as.
Carry out the duties assigned to me as.
An officer of the Garden City Fire Department.
Officer of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
Will at all times.
Strive to protect lives and property.
Strive to protect lives and property.
And trusted to my care.
Trusted to my care.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By the powers vested in me, as Fire Commissioner of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly installed.
Okay, so we'll move on to the comments from department heads, and I'll begin with Mr. Barone. I wasn't given an order, so I'm gonna circle. We can go the other way.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board, Board of Trustees. DPW has three items on the agenda tonight. The first one is item number two on their finance. It's for the transfer of funds, requesting the transfer of $211,000, $211,725. This is a reversal of a transfer that was approved at a prior board meeting. We're reversing it back from sidewalks to the road account. We, I had estimated that there would be more sidewalk repairs than what was needed. The transfer amount includes $6,000 to improve crosswalks at the St. Paul's Facility. The other two transfers, letter B is for approximately $1,000 for materials and supplies to cover transmission, distribution, to cover pump and utility accessories. Letter C is for approximately $15,000 to cover utility bills at the central garage on their public works. Item 11, authorization is requested to transfer $2,945.25 on the garage door replacement to sewer building repairs. This is needed to cover a change order for the replacement, maintenance of the pumps at our sewer pump stations. There is a net difference for that amount between a proposed change order and items number five and seven that are no longer required in the project. When they took the pumps apart, they realized that items number five and seven were not required for maintenance, and the change order is to replace internal pieces of the pumps, similar to building an engine. Once you take it apart, you want to replace certain items that wear and tear. Item number 12 is for change orders for the first floor construction area. Change order number six, in the amount of $11,000, is for FOB access to the doors and the special hinges that go along with those access knobs. Change order number seven is to install some outlets, one dedicated line for a new IT server rack and one receptacle in the office for layout and for, um, logistically, in the office being better. Sorry. The last item is change order number eight, is in the amount of $5,750. This is to fix water damage that happened from the roof. The roof project is, the roof is being replaced right now. They expect it to be finished in one and a half weeks. And the final item for that is credit, an amount of $1,250. We did not install a proposed door that we were looking to install. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
DPW head Barone, when, or maybe Ralph will answer this. Do you think we'll be done with the renovations of the first floor in our, in our village hall?
That is a great question. Not soon enough. I think, I think Mr. Jiminelli could attest about a month.
One more month to go. Okay. It seemed to go kind of slow, but I guess it'll pick up now.
When, when we're dealing with multiple contractors and subs, it's kind of difficult to, to get everybody on board at the same time. So we have to just alternate. When the job is complete, we move on to the next, to the next. So we're, we're just about right there. The HVAC system is, is pretty much, let's say, 90, 90% complete. We're waiting for that to be completed, so they can come install the drop ceiling and carpeting in the space downstairs, so.
The village hall, the boardroom HVAC unit is up and running. As you can feel, it's very nice and comfortable here today. So that was just completed today.
Thank you.
John, what's the, what's the timeframe on the crosswalk Dunkin' Donuts to Town Meat Market on Seventh Street? Where are we on that?
So that was, um, we had decided we wanted to go with bump outs and a raised crosswalk. That is still in with the design group with our vendor. We're in the timeframe, the proposed schedule. I believe that was supposed to be done mid-June. I could verify that, though.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Wu.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Under Finance Department, the first item, a write-off of accounts receivable. Board authorization is requested to allow us to write off this claim. The village had sent a bill for damage to village property in the amount of $5,654.68. And after much back and forth, this claim has been deemed uncollectible. This claim has been reviewed by the village's legal committee, and the recommendation to write off has been vetted by them. Item number three is the re-adoption of the board policies. These are financial policies, the purchase and procurement policy, fund balance, fixed asset investment policies. We're requesting to re-adopt these policies with no modifications. And again, these policies were provided and reviewed by the village's Finance and Audit Committee. Number four is the request to designate the following banking institutions as the depository for village funds. JP Morgan Chase, TD Bank, Capital One, and M&amp;T Bank, which is formerly People's United. So again, these are the same banks we've used in the past year with no changes, except for the change to M&amp;T Bank, which bought out People's United. And those are the financial items on the agenda. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Jiminelli.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. Before I bring up Phil Butler with regards to items seven and eight on the site plan approval, I just want to go over the performance for the building department for the month of April. We've issued for the month of April to date 98 permits. We performed 123 building inspections, and fees taken in for the month of April to date is $138,000. I'd like to bring up Phil Butler to discuss the amendment on the site plan approval for 1200 Franklin Avenue, along with the license agreement. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Board. Philip Butler with the Law Firm of Farrell Fritz, on behalf of the applicant. We're requesting a site plan amendment to the approved site plan for the former Lord &amp; Taylor. As I'm sure everyone here has noticed, the building is currently under construction for repurposing as an office use. What we're requesting tonight is just a modification of the sidewalk effectively on the west side of the building, which is technically located on village property. We have an existing license agreement to use the specified area for a sidewalk and also for parking. We are going to be keeping the same number of parking stalls, the same number of handicap parking stalls, and really the purpose of the application is just to consolidate what was originally going to be three landscaped parking islands into a single entry plaza to kind of just create a focal point on the west side of the building. Aesthetically, it just, it functions better. So that's really the application. I think it's very straightforward. Plans were submitted to this board a few weeks ago. I do have extra copies if anyone needs them, but otherwise, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And these plans that, everyone has the plans, they were approved by the planning commission March 1st and ARDB on March 28th?
That is correct.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the plans?
Just a quick one. Counselor, can you give us an update on the construction there? Will this cause any delays? And how's the build-out going?
I'll actually defer to my client to answer that question, because he's better suited for it. But they've already turned over possession to the second floor tenant, and I believe they are going to be turning over possession to the first floor tenant shortly. The construction inside the building would not be held up by this, but obviously, they can't complete the project and get their COs until everything is done. So we need a, a final approved site plan in order to proceed with all the work that would be required to be completed before we can close out the, the permits and get the CO. But if you want more specifics on status, I'll turn it over to Andrew Wallace.
Hi, Andrew Wallace from Hudson's Bay Company. No, the construction's going fine, as frankly, I think Phil has summed it up very well. This particular change and reconfiguration of the stoop, more or less, is not going to impact at all the eventual opening of the space by, by the two tenants in the building.
So I understand that the second floor will be, or has been leased to Morgan Stanley, correct?
Yes, I think that's been in the paper.
Yeah, and then the second, or I'm sorry, then the first floor? Who, who's the tenant there?
I gotta tell us, I, I don't know what's been said. I'm under an NDA, and I don't know if it's been, I, I know they haven't said anything specifically, and I don't want to be the one to, to reveal it, but it is a single tenant that will take all 85,000 square feet, give or take, up and down the floor.
And is it medically oriented business?
Yes.
Can't say? Okay.
Yes.
You cannot tell us in, in, or?
I'm sure, I, I don't mean to be cagey, but no, I don't know.
Urgent care, is it?
No, medical.
Doctors offices?
Mainly medical office, regular standard practices, nothing, um, no, no overnights, nothing along those lines.
Okay, yeah, no operating facilities or whatnot?
Nothing I've seen.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
But it would, they would occupy the entire first floor of this medical facility?
That's correct. Medical offices.
Medical offices, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
So I don't have anything further to add, so if they just had for questions, then I'm happy to conclude. Thank you.
Aren't you the attorney who came late one night at the end of the meeting? Something added on behalf of your client?
I'm never late.
After three and a half hours, yeah.
No, 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 no. We came and tried to get onto an agenda, but we were not at it.
Okay, thank you. They were at it.
We suspended the rolls.
Oh, when we had the license agreement approved, right, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And anything else, Mr. Jiminelli?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to give an update to Seppi on the edge mirror? I think you and I talked about that a bit. I know it's tentative right now.
It's tentative. We did receive that second sketch with the Fire Station 2, with the revamp of the stair tower and the addition, squaring off the building on the right. But that's all I have right now. That's photo with the plans at the Fire Commissioner. We're gonna have a discussion of a meeting with the Fire Chief, and we'll go from there. Take the next steps.
Thanks for sending it over to me to look at it, anyway. The tentative ones.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Recreation has two items on tonight's agenda, number nine and 10. Number nine is a change order for Northport Tree Company for removing and replanting a tree that was just inadvertently placed in the wrong spot. It was deemed to be in the best interest of the tree to remove it and plant it a little further down the road. That's for $150, and there is adequate funding in that account. Number 10 is basically two items. One is a transfer of funds to fund a change order for Belfour Restorations. We're requesting a transfer of $15,433.34 to the senior citizen floor replacement from the senior citizen HVAC replacement. These were ARPA funds that Treasurer Wu had acquired for us, and that is to cover a change order for the flooring in the senior center. When we went out for the flooring project, we did not anticipate doing the den, the card room, or the pool room. But once we had the first pipe and the floor had to be replaced, it was decided to add those areas in. So the entire building now has a beautiful laminate floor. And this change order does include a credit that we received from Belfour for swapping out the original vinyl floor. And that's all we have on the agenda. I do have a couple of quick announcements. My first is that as of tomorrow morning, we have two dedicated pickleball courts at Grove Park, and they will be open for pickleball only all day, all week. No charge. People come down and play to your heart's content. Second, I'm happy to report that pending a final inspection by the Fire Marshal tomorrow morning, we will begin to move some of our programs back into the senior citizens' building next Wednesday. The work is finally done. Belfour and their contractors have done a terrific job. Everything looks great. Our crew is going in tomorrow. It was, they had a 12-man cleaning crew in last Friday, which brought the building up to pretty good condition. Our people are going in tomorrow to bring it up to Garden City condition, which means mopping the floor and getting some shine on it, getting the restrooms really spiffy clean. And we're gonna start feeding programs back in from the cottages, a little bit at a time, and we will be scheduling a grand reopening down the road a week or two, and we'll certainly invite you all for that and get your free ham sandwich when you come over. That's all I have this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
I have one quick question, Mayor. Thank you. How did opening day go on the, on the baseball fields and the softball fields?
Well, the original opening day got rained out, so that was an easy one. We, we handled that, no problem.
Is it this week?
We did much better the following. We had nice weather. We had good crowds at all of our facilities. The fields were in good condition. We had some extra help from commissioners, people over at Stewart Field. We did access the Raymond Court parking lot in the back as needed. We filled the first, the front parking lot first, and then the code enforcement people were nice enough to direct all the drivers individually around to the back. They did a really nice job. I received no complaints from anybody, GCAA included. And as of this coming Saturday, we will be reopening field number three, sometimes referred to as the Major League Field. We did a major rebuild on that field over the course of the early spring weeks. We took out all of the infield grass, laid down new sod, put down a new clay infield, hydro seeded out in the back. We had two brand-new chain link dugouts installed, repaired some fencing, and trimmed up some trees. So that field is now looking pretty good, and it's ready to go. So we got through opening day quite well.
Excellent. Just one quick follow-up, Paul. I took a quick trip over to the, to the Stewart Fields, and I noticed that there are lacrosse goals in the outfield. in the outfield's, and I was wondering, how does that work during baseball season or the baseball games?
Well, the GCAA has the ability and the permission to move those goals if they feel they're needed, but the kids that play over there are typically on the smaller size, and the goals are far enough out in the field that they typically don't come into play. We do have girls' lacrosse practices for the Garden City intramural teams on Sunday afternoons, and frankly, it's just easier to leave the goals than have them drag back and forth where they tear up the grass and, you know, just get in the way of things. But it's been fine so far, and again, GCAA knows that they're allowed to move them, they feel the need.
Thank you.
Well, I wanted to thank you and the Recreation Department for all the work you've been doing in balancing the needs of GCAA with the concerns of people on Raymond Court and the use of that parking lot. I think you've been doing a great job, and I've been keeping the entire board apprised of what the plans are and how you've been working them out. So thanks for all the attention to that.
It's my pleasure. I sincerely hope that we're making everybody happy. It is somewhat a bit of a tight rope, but you've heard the line from me a hundred times. I work with really good people, and they're committed to putting our residents first and doing the best we can for them. So those words will be passed along. I appreciate them very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Blake, Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda. Just want to mention today, we had a fire at one oh five Seventh Street. The Fire Department did an excellent job. We got there right away. The evacuation was done in a swift manner. Everybody was safe. The firefighters, we closed off the street, blocked all pedestrian traffic. It was very heavy that day, I mean, that time. And also, the firemen, with assistance from other departments, were able to locate the fire and put it out, and it did a great job. Also, I just want to mention on this Saturday, we have Drug Takeback Day between ten and two. Anybody with unused, unwander, expired house medications, please bring to Garden City Police Headquarters, and we'll dispose of them for you. Also, April twenty-ninth, we had the Run for a Cure at the Garden City High School, and a fun run starts at eight-thirty. The run starts at nine. Expect traffic delays probably between eight and about eleven in the area of the high school south, also between Rockway, Evan and Nassau Boulevard. That's all I have.
Any questions? Any trustees?
I thought the Fire Department, Police Department worked very well today. I was over there. I happened to pick something up at CVS, and then I saw all the trucks. So I figured, let me walk over and take a look, but it was well done. They contained the fire to one apartment, which was good, in the Alexander House building, and the police coordinated it well with them.
Absolutely. It was a seamless between the both of us, and it was, really worked out very well.
Commissioner, I wanted to thank you very much for your consistent responsiveness to all those sign issues and turning issues and road issues that I keep sending you. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very good.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Ronenberger.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, members of the public. Mayor, I don't have as much to say now that John Veroni's here, so thank you, John. But I do have some items. Number one, the Library Children's Project, which is on the cusp of completion, also has two Dormitory Authority of State of New York SAM grants applied to it. There's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from Senator Thomas and fifty thousand dollar SAM grant from Semler Monroe. I contacted the Dormitory Authority last month for an updated status, because I filled out the applications last year, and I was wondering what was going on, because we can submit bills now. We spent more than we're asking back for. I found out this morning that the reason we haven't received any money yet is because they haven't assigned a person to this yet, because the form that was signed last year by the mayor has expired in March and has to be renewed every year. So tomorrow, I will be preparing paperwork for you to reassign myself and Village Clerk Alpin as the officers who can deal with the Dormitory Authority on behalf of the village for this grant. That's item number one. Item number two, the Health Department of Nassau County was scheduled to sample well thirteen today for a final approval for the AOP emergency contaminant. However, the pump for well thirteen started making some serious noise and vibrating. We had to shut it down. The pump has failed. It was underproducing. We can't turn it back on, so the good news is that this well, like all the wells that have gone through the AOP upgrades, was scheduled in the fall to have a new pump installed, the wellhead enlarged, and new controls put in. Anticipating the supply chain delays, we ordered the pump and found out two days ago it's ready to ship. So the pump is on its way, and we had AC Schultes, which is the company that does this type of work, especially work. They met this morning with Mr. Carey and H2M, and they believe they can get this well back online within four weeks, not just the pump, but the wellhead refurbished and the new controls. A lot of the controls for these well sites are more than thirty years old. You can't read some of the gauges, so we'll have a complete refurbishment just around Memorial Day, which is better than losing the well for the whole season. I just also wanted to let you know that in general, last year, we went the whole summer with four wells. We have ten wells, of which nine can run concurrently. We only ran with four because the other ones were all in some type of construction, and the million-gallon water tank wasn't online for the whole season. This year, we're going into the water season, the pumping season, which is starting up right now with a full, fully effective million-gallon tank at Maria Lane. Wells ten and eleven in Clinton are fully functional with AOP. Well seven at Waterworks is fully functional AOP. Well nine at Edgemere will be refurbished with AOP in the fall, but it's under the contaminant level, so it's operating. Well fourteen came online today, so we lost well thirteen at Garden City Country Club, and we gained back fourteen, so we have no net loss of wells right now. Wells twelve and thirteen should be on within the next four to six weeks, and well eight in the next month or two, and that's water. Also, I want to point out that going Mr. Veroni's update on number eleven, the Cedar Valley and Meadow Street sewer pump renovation change order, it was for two thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents, but it was originally for sixty-five thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. So change orders five and seven, which he mentioned did not have to be executed once he took the pumps apart, is a savings or we don't have to spend sixty-three thousand dollars. I want to point out that number. More good news that Mr. Veroni shared with me just this evening is, a couple of months ago, Mr. Givinello and Ms. Veroni and I met with PSCG Long Island. I contacted them about energy efficiency programs and rebates. We sat here with our liaison and a gentleman named Cahill, who's been immersed in this program for decades, and we talked about low-hanging fruit-like LED light conversions. Even talked about changing the exit signs, LED bulbs to save power. But during the conversation, we talked about the new air conditioning system, and it was indicated that might be a rebatable. And Mr. Veroni followed up, and today, we got notified that we were pre-approved for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars in rebates. We don't have the check in hand yet, but we're on the way. But thank you, John, for following up so quickly. We anticipate talking to them about other programs like the air conditioning or at the library, anything we can do to get rebates. So that's good news. And finally, item number eight on the agenda is change order for the library. Now, in the audience tonight is Executive Marion Malagon, Executive Director of the Library. She attends almost all of our meetings, so I invited her to handle her own item so that John or I don't have to. So, Mary Ann?
I'll take any questions anytime.
There it is. Oh, good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Thank you, and congratulations to everybody appointed tonight and new terms. I wanted to voice over two change orders for the Library Children's renovation project. The board authorization is requested to approve following change orders submitted by Preferred Construction in Plainview, New York. First is change order nineteen, which is to furnish and install window film at two additional window panes beneath existing display cases in the front lobby just above the staircase going down to the front, to the lower level. That's at a cost of five hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. And change order number twenty, which is to install an exterior GFI outlet at a cost of seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. This is as per the inspector from Certified Electrical Inspections. An exterior GFI outlet is required at the northern through-wall condenser unit as a service receptacle for repairing, working on the units in the future. The proposal includes penetrating the wall and sealing is needed. No additional funding is requested for these two change orders as there is funding in the project allowance in the contract with Preferred Construction. That's the two items I have for submission, and I can take any questions you have.
How are we doing on, when is the big day?
Still don't have an official date for you. However, we do have, we still have continuing inspections and walkthroughs happening this weekend next, and I'm hoping to have a closer number, a firmer number for you by the end of next week.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Swazie?
I don't have anything else, but I just want to thank Mr. Blake, Mr. Givinello, anyone who worked on this opening of the senior center, but especially Mr. Blake. The contract to Belfour is excellent, but every time I need an update from Mr. Blake, I ask a specific question, he gave me the answer I needed, and he gave me updates on everything else I didn't ask about, and I was able to communicate that information to interested residents who made inquiries, and it was just a great job, Paul. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have one question with the water. Any update on the worth of phosphates, water testing, lead service line inventory?
I don't have an update, but I will check on it tomorrow and send an update to the board.
Okay.
It's been about nine weeks now. We did have to do quarterly sampling as directed by the Health Department, and then we're, we'll, we have to do another major sampling, I think, in June. By then, we should see some positive results. Oh, there is one other thing I'm sorry I forgot to mention regarding water. The, although the tank has been online for a good number of months now, the SCADA system, the secondary control system that monitors the entire water system, we've been running cell-off system pressure. In other words, the booster pumps at the well site are maintaining the pressure, which is not the way you want to operate, because it shifts the water back and forth, but that causes brown water. Anyway, next Tuesday, Wednesday, we're shifting over to atmospheric pressure again and SCADA system. We have the consultants, ECU Control, whoever needs to be online, they'll be there to tweak it so that the alarms are properly set to the new posture. So that's very good news operationally. That's the preferred status. It should also reduce our overtime, because we've been monitoring the system pressure each night since we went on system pressure. That'll eliminate that overtime as well.
An item that came up last night at our EAB meeting was the, we were kind of over discussing all the things, issues we've been addressing, and on the lead, someone raised that the state free testing program may have ended, and I wanted to find out, I know we were doing the village testing, is that still available to residents who would like to test their water for lead?
Yes, the state warned us a long time ago that the program is very limited. We got the impression at the time they couldn't even supply Garden City with all the tests that were even asked versus the whole state, so I'm not quite sure how big a program it was. Nonetheless, we were running our own testing concurrent with that, and it continues if people ask. So that's still in place, and demand isn't as high as it was, but it's still in place.
Right. Perhaps we want to send out some sort of a message to remind residents of the availability of testing and that they can contact the village for the testing in case someone reads something about the state testing ending and thinks it's not available. Maybe do a little message to make sure everyone's aware they can still get their water tested for the lead. Any other questions?
Just one quick one. Ralph, where are the, where's the geographic concentration of the requests for the tests? Is there one? Is it in, is it in the Mott section?
We, I don't have a map in front of me. The Mott section was the area where the interest from the Health Department went because of the concentration of hotspots from the state testing. Nonetheless, it's the entire village is open to the testing, and we've actually had requests from one part of town, but like a parent is on another side of town, they've asked requests for those. So there is a map that shows, and I can, I can get that produced. It's, I think it's pretty much up to date. Every time they get a test, they have to update the map, but it shows where the tests were called for. It shows which ones was tested by the state and us, or just the state or just us, and it has stars and red circles and a key to help you make sense of it all. I don't know if there's an English narrative next to it to, that I can provide, but I'll see if I can get an executive summary for the board.
No problem. Thank you very much.
Just so you raise that, I do want it to be, it came up in the EAB meetings, like, is it just the Mott section? I want to make sure people know it's not an issue limited to the Mott section. That is, there has been a lot of talk in testing the Mott section. We know historically those homes were built with lead service lines, but this is a village-wide. You really need to find out what your service line is, and it could be lead in any, you know, there are a lot of factors to look at, but it is not limited to one neighborhood.
So just to add a little more clarity to that, the service line that goes into your house from the village water main is owned by the resident or the business, number one. Number two, most people, when they renovate a home or they renovate their plumbing line, they go to the curb and stop, but there's a piece under the road that goes to the main. If you're on the side of the fire hydrant, the length is different than if you're across the street from the fire hydrant, so it's a little more expensive connection. We do have a list of plumbers in the area that the Department of Public Works and Building Department have worked with before. We do not recommend them, but I send them out to any person who seeks a head start. We always recommend that they search and get the best price they can, so we do get calls from residents who work on that as well.
Perhaps the messaging, as we remind people of the availability of lead testing, we could also include the fact that we waived the permit fees until, and leave, include the date. I'm not sure what the date is offhand that we.
October twenty-fourth, I think, or May twenty-fourth. May of twenty-fourth.
Twenty-twenty-four. Maybe include that in the message, and that may prompt people to replace their lead service lines.
I'd just like to add that anyone can request a lead water test by calling five-one-six-four-six-five-four-zero-one-seven or emailing gardencitysampling@h2m.com.
So just to clarify further, that, if you leave a message on that line, it automatically becomes an email sent to H2M directly. We offer the email address, but just by leaving a message, it becomes that email to that address.
Thank you. All right, so do we have, we've completed the reports from Department Head, Village Administrator, and Council? Any, perhaps I'll turn it over to Ed Fineran for the resolution.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, the Mayor and the board decided that it was an important duty of ours to, to consider a new amendment, which is very similar to, I'm sorry, a new resolution, which is very similar to the old resolution regarding the potential for the Las Vegas Sands Casino Development over at the Coliseum. So what I did with everyone's help is redrafted the resolution. I'm gonna read it now very, very quickly. Opposition to the proposed casino development, and I'm gonna do it quick, fast. Opposition to the proposed casino development at the Nassau Coliseum hub site. Board authorization is requested to adopt a resolution stating that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Garden City oppose the development and/or presence of a casino at the Nassau Coliseum slash Nassau hub site, as this will have a negative impact on our village and the surrounding communities. Whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Garden City notes that the presence of a casino at the Nassau Coliseum Nassau hub site would have significant negative impact on the quality of life within the village, which would be dramatic, and the placing of a quote "round-the-clock" unquote 24/7 casino in the heart of Nassau County would permanently impact the character of the surrounding communities. And whereas, the board has received considerable input from residents across the village in opposition to the development of a casino at the Nassau hub site. And whereas, the serious security issues that surround casinos are well-known, including DWI's, prostitution, drugs, human sex trafficking, and compulsive gambling, and moreover, would create a severe impact on our village roadways, which are already overburdened with traffic. And whereas, the board urges the Nassau County Legislature and the Nassau County and/or Town of Hempstead IDA to. in opposition to the development of a casino at the Nassau hub site. And whereas, the serious security issues that surround casinos are well-known, including DWI's, prostitution, drugs, human sex trafficking, and compulsive gambling. And moreover, would create a severe impact on our village roadways, which are already overburdened with traffic. And whereas, the board urges the Nassau County Legislature and the Nassau County and/or Town of Hempstead IDA to actively seek out development ideas which will enhance our communities. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the board, on behalf of the residents in Garden City, is adamantly opposed to a casino at the Nassau hub site. And be it further resolved that the board urges the Nassau County Legislature to reject the Las Vegas Sands Corp's request to secure the transfer and control of the lease agreements for the Nassau hub and Marriott hotel sites so as to facilitate a casino at that site. And urges the Nassau IDA, Nassau County, and/or Town of Hempstead IDA to look towards developing appropriate uses of these properties, which will enhance Garden City and our surrounding communities rather than negatively impact our collective quality of life.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on that. I think it's something we all feel very strongly about, and we're listening to the resident input on that.
And if I might add, a good friend of, of, of the residents here, Monica Kylie, I think spearheads the Say No to the Casino Group, and you'll find it on Facebook. And Monica and, and her team always have updates on what's happening. There's a legislative, there's a county legislature meeting next Monday at 1:00, which hopefully one or two of us will be able to attend. And we urge folks who do have a strong opinion to, to get involved with that committee. Thank you.
Any other trustee comments on any items? It was put in the consent calendar.
I'd like to take it off the consent calendar so we can comment on it. I believe that would be appropriate to do now or later on.
Well, you're a trustee, so you could, or you can comment on it. Do you want to take it off for a vote, or we can leave it in for the vote? The comments are, it's open for comment now.
The comments that I have with regard to the resolution is that, as was shown in Newsday, the process by which Nassau County is moving forward, I believe to be flawed for a number of reasons. One of which, starting off with, is the information that exists has not been known to either the residents nor the villages. For instance, none of us, at least I have not seen neither a site plan, drawings, or proof of concept. So with regard to the information of the resolution, it should be known that while the resolution condemns what has happened so far, there's a lot more information that they, either the county or Sands, should be providing to the residents so that we understand fully what they intend to do. There is a very old phrase that the house always wins. That's not us. It is them. And therefore, when you look at the ads that are coming, why do they feel that they need to use children as a selling point for a casino? If the strength of their plan has merit, it should stand on what is, in fact, the benefit that will occur. But unfortunately, we are being sold a bill of goods, and there is an active corporate cannibalism that is being forced, fostered upon the residents of not only the village, but the surrounding area and the county. If we are to understand the process, it should be like chess with all the pieces are on the table. But right now, not to use the example of gambling, but it's roulette. It's like cards. There's a river card. They have yet to explain to the individuals, the residents, what are the occupancy plans? How many people do they have? How many rooms are in the hotels? So the resolution is based upon a wealth of information that has not been told to us that should be told to us. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Toreno. Any other comments?
There's two things I would say. One is, I think that there should be some kind of a formal outreach committee or group, something to try to get in touch with the other five villages who are abutting it or near it, to try to see if it can be a combined effort. I would note that the reason we may appear to be passing the same resolution twice is because we had an election in the village. There's a new mayor. There's several new trustees. And we wanted to reiterate our position on this. The second thing is, I don't believe the county has done the kind of outreach for other uses. I have heard from several sources that esports can use and fill the existing Coliseum. And as everyone knows, or most of you know, esports can fill up stadiums around the country, competitions in esports. And that's just one example of a kind of use that I don't think has been explored by the county. And I think it's all moving too fast and that they haven't evaluated other options. And there hasn't been the kind of creativity from the county that there should be for such an important site. Thank you.
Trustee Kelly, trustee Toreno, and the board, we have reached out to various towns. The mayors, the mayor of Beniova, mayor of Westbury. We've gotten statements that they're against it, but they didn't come to the rally or make any public statements on it. So we will try to pursue that. Westbury or Old Westbury? Westbury. Peter Cavallaro from Westbury, yeah. So we'll try to get them out along with Stuart Manor and whoever else we can get at this point.
We all are maybe east, but we are speaking with other communities.
East Williston, right.
The Nassau County Village Officials Association. We were able to speak with a number of other leaders, and that's something we're working on.
That's great.
Yep.
But aren't, Mayor, aren't you already, or aren't we already arm-in-arm with, with the folks from Hempstead and Uniondale? Are we working with them, or am I mistaken there?
We are, but I think, I don't know about the mayor, is the, that's the problem. Not the mayor.
And Uniondale is not incorporated, so I know we.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they have a village government, but Hempstead, I, I, we're not, there are leaders, community leaders in both communities that are adamantly against it. The Chamber of Commerce in Hempstead is for it. So we, we do need to do more outreach, I think, overall.
Point taken.
Obviously, Hofstra is the one that has the most skin in the game. And obviously, they commenced a litigation. The question is whether any entity or the village has filed any of the FOI, FOIL requests to the planning commission in order to get their documentation. Because that would be the basis for what they make their determination. And if you're going to do an Article 78 in order to contravene it, you're going to have to get and show, or make a showing that the documentation upon which they made the determination was faulty to a substantial extent. So that would be one of my suggestions.
One of the things we might want to consider is if we do team up with the neighboring mayors, is that we hire council and split the cost four, five. Because this is, it sounds like, you know, there are legal moves that we might want to have the ability to undertake.
All right. Any other trustee comments on this or any other items?
I would mention that we're doing a lot in traffic in the next few weeks. And next Thursday night at 7:00, we're open to anyone attending. We're exploring the, the final stages of the traffic calming plan for the village. And we welcome as much resident input as we can get as we go to finalize it. And we're starting the implementation of some of the temporary calming devices. And we're at a stage where we're transitioning from studying to implementing. And we're going to have, of course, two weeks from tonight, another traffic commission meeting, and that's at 6:30. So if anybody's interested in the movement forward here to implement traffic calming in the village, if you have any issue with the signage, the lights, the intersections in your neighborhood, or anywhere in the village, you should get in touch with the traffic commission because some things happen that are just serendipitous. We happen, the commissioner and I were exploring the crossing across Hilton Avenue from Stewart Avenue, which I call Eighth Street out here, for people returning to Wyndham. And a new sign is being put up there. But we simply learned of that because we observed people having difficult, difficulty crossing there. And so there's a lot being done to try to make the village safer for pedestrians. And anybody who's interested in joining in that effort can attend either meeting, either next Thursday at 7:00, or the following Thursday, the traffic commission meeting here in Village Hall at 6:30.
Thank you, and thank you, trustee Kelly, for your outstanding leadership on traffic. There's a lot going on. I tried to highlight it in the last mayor's column, and there's even more. So we'll keep talking about traffic, and please come to the meetings. A lot of good things are happening. All right. Any other trustee comments? All right. Do we have any citizens' comments on agenda items? Anyone in the room with a citizen comment on an agenda item? Yes, it is. The resolutions on the agenda.
I'm alive, yeah. All right, Bob Warmer's 28 group. I agree that the villagers should get together and maybe have an attorney on a, on a stipend or whatever to keep them in reserve. But we have to understand that there are only three licenses available, and there's already 10 people applying for those three licenses. So we may be, you know, moving forward and panicking, you know, throwing the life jackets out and, and the lifeboats before we left the dock. So I think really we have to go, in, in this particular case, be prepared, be alert, and we'll go forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Steve Guaray, 44 Cambridge Avenue. I read, I heard the resolution. I think it's very well formulated. But I would add one comment. At the EAB meeting last night that I zoomed into, there was discussion about water, not just for the village, but also for the county, and how that could also impact on the village. And my question would relate to the aquifer. What impact would this development have on the aquifer, on the sources of water that we rely on for this village and for this county? Thank you.
Thank you. Ozpec, I think, just voted negative that they didn't have enough information for that reason yesterday. So that's a, it's a valid concern. Amongst many others. All right. Any other comments in the room?
Good evening. I have to announce that I am the only holder of an off-peak parking pass. And I wanted to. I want to thank Darcia Palmer and Nicole Chester for listening to my angst over a sticker that I couldn't even read after two days. And we have a new one, and it's on the back bumper, so that should be good for Commissioner Jackson. So when you want a ticket, people, you can see the sticker. You can read my license plate and everything. But I called Darcia today, and I learned that I'm the only one who has a sticker because I'm the only one who paid my $50 bill. So may I ask the board to get the word out to the community that this is a benefit. It's a wonderful thing. And now that the weather is warm, we can all go into the city. If you want to travel east, you can leave your car at the train and go anywhere on Long Island. But I think we have to get the word out because I'd like to see the village get some revenue from this. So thank you very much for all your help on this. I'm thrilled. My husband said you should just stay home and do Zoom, but no, I wanted to thank you all personally. So thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do have one more comment. It was concerning the traffic commission. Due to all the construction, when I go over to the Roosevelt Field area, I've been going down through the Mott section. And when you get up to Old Country Road and you have to turn right on Old Country, it's really hard to see the traffic coming because we don't have, we have too much shrubbery right next to the curb. And I think that's a situation throughout the village that needs to be looked at. When you plant bushes very close to an intersection, you really can't see oncoming traffic. And I think if you went down any of the streets that are like, but near Russell, you'll see what I'm talking about. And those cars are not doing 30. They're doing more than, more like 40, 45 on Old Country. And it's really difficult to make the right turn. So I just like maybe the traffic commission to consider, you know, having something on the, maybe on the village code involving intersections and how you have to keep shrubbery to a certain height or a certain distance so that people can really see. The other night, someone was running on South Road, and I was stopped. But they just like, you know, they didn't even pay attention. And I'm glad I had my foot on the brake because it came out of nowhere. And they didn't see me because the shrubbery is very high there in some, some places. But that's the only thing I have to suggest with the traffic commission. I'm a member, but this just, you know, came up tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
On the first topic, I think we should push something out, letting people know about those permits. And a little later, we're going to get to my communications committee, which will hopefully, this, it's one of the many wonderful things in Garden City that people may not know about. So we'll push it out and.
So I've made notes about the different communications, and they'll be assigned tomorrow to the appropriate department heads. Mr. Blake, however, can comment on this last comment.
Yeah. Our Department of Work is in contact with Commissioner's office. We do investigate shrub issues at intersections. And if it is a private shrub, we do put the homeowner on notice that the shrub has to be cut back. They have a limited amount of time to do that. If they do not respond, we will go out and trim the shrubs back ourselves. Normally, we get requests from residents for specific intersections. We ride around the village and we look ourselves. And commissioners' officers are always sending over little notes about certain intersections. Ms. Krug, if you can give me specifics, we'll get a fellow out there in the next few days to take a look at exactly the streets that you're mentioning. And we'll address them, either if it's, if it's private, we'll send them a notice. If it's village-owned shrubs, we'll take care of them.
I think it's like four streets, like from Russell Road going west.
Okay.
No, you'll see, you'll see, you know, try to make the right turn and be lucky if you can make the right turn. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room with a comment on an agenda item?
I would mention that the overgrown shrubs is something that the traffic commission addresses frequently in town. We've addressed it recently on Oxford Boulevard, Wellington Road, in conjunction with the Recreation Department and the Police Department. And so it's something that people should feel free to report because it can be a road hazard, even at minor intersections, not big intersections like Old Country Road, even in neighborhoods. And the commissioner and Paul are always very responsive in addressing these overgrown shrub issues. shrub issues. We recognize it as a serious matter, and so feel free to report it.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. All right, any questions on Zoom? Anyone on an agenda item? Seeing no questions, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the March 30th, 2023 special meeting on the budget? So that would be limited to the trustees who were here on the 30th of March.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so that's unanimous. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of April 3rd, 2023?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. All right, moving on to new business. I am appointing Lawrence Marciano as commissioner of building and planning, which includes Architectural Design Review Board, Planning Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm reappointing William A. Belmer as village historian. And the next appointments are subject to board of trustee approval. So I'm proposing, as associate justices, reappointment of Merrill Biscone and Peter Menandakis. Do I have a motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously passes. Or any opposed? No. Unanimous. I also am proposing appointment of Owen Barber of 93 Jefferson Street to represent the Western Water Authority of Nassau County for a term to expire on April 7th of 2025. He replaces David Osborne, whose term expired April 3rd of 2023. Do I have a motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That was unanimous. And I'm also proposing reappointment of John Riley as a member of the environmental advisory board for a term to expire April 5th of 2027. His term expired on April 3rd of 2023. Is there a motion? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. I am also proposing appointment of Michael Schroeder as chairman of the zoning board of appeals for a term to expire April 1st, 2024. He is presently serving on the zoning board. He will be replacing John Villanella, who's as chair, whose term expired April 3rd, 2023. Do I have a motion? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. And tonight, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I am establishing a mayor's committee on communications. And this is to go to an issue highlighted by Lynn Krug tonight of how we're getting information out to residents. A lot of great things happen here in the village, and people don't always hear about them if they're not at these meetings or reading the newspaper. So we're going to be focusing, I'm appointing John Cantwell, Jeff Rothgaber, Effie Campbell, and Susie Samuels. And we're going to spend the next couple of months focusing on just an overall communications plan from the letter that goes to residents when they move in and forward, how we communicate with residents, our website, social media, mailings, newsletters, what's the best way for us to have great communication with the residents. One thing I'll mention that I started doing in the mayor's column is trying to do a, you know, a week, what's going on this week in the village, not just, you know, our meetings, but include what's going on, fun things at the library and the recreation department. Maybe we have a parade going on because I have heard feedback that people don't really know where to go. You have to go to a lot of different places to, you know, find information. So I appreciate the information if everyone can just, you know, continue, department heads giving that information so we can compile a nice, you know, week ahead for residents to know what's going on. All right, so, and as part of our communications, we have the new website. And we recognize that we have more work to do. We're moving into a next phase on that website to better meet the needs of what we envision the website being. So in doing that, I am going to, Mr. Swazie and I met with Susie Samuels, who had been working as a consultant with us. I'd like her to get access again so she can look and give us a proposal on what she would be able to do to get the website, some of the features that we've discussed. And I'll be getting feedback from this communications committee as part of that so we can lay out what exactly we want from the website.
Right, just a little clarity. Ms. Samuels requested access to the back end of the website, which I went to do. And when I was looking at it, I didn't see the ability to give her read-only access. I think it's either full admin or not. And since the contract and the proposal is forthcoming, and that's the document that would allow me to grant it, I want the board to authorize me to give her the admin access so she can prepare her proposal for a future agenda item. With your authority and permission, I can do that, but I wouldn't do it without the actual resolution being passed in the future otherwise.
All right, so I guess I will, I'm proposing that we authorize this access so we can get a proposal. Does anyone have any questions on that or comment?
I do, Mayor. What exactly is that, is that info?
So unlike most systems in the village, you know, it's, the website is a communication information vehicle. And, but it's in production, and an administrator is an administrator. I do not suspect anything will be wrong, but she, she needs the access, she says, so she can get in the backend and look around. Like I said, she has regular user rights, like she signed up and she can go in and sign up for alerts and stuff like that, but she wants to go down with a higher authority or permission. When we eventually do pass a resolution, starting the second phase, I had a talk, I talked with Civic Plus today, our account manager, and I asked him about a testing environment. So when we go into a redesign mode, they set up a testing environment, which is where she'll perform most of the work. And then when it's authorized and seen by the board and you like the second phase, then it gets rolled into production. So administrative rights will be in the test environment, and I can, I believe, turn them off in the production environment during that redesign period.
Larry, do you have...
Has she, has she given you any color on how long she needs the admin rights?
No, I haven't, we haven't told, we only met the other night with the mayor. So I, I really don't know the scope yet. I did ask Ms. Samuels via email today. I sent her back her original proposal from September, I think it was. And I asked her to, if she could possibly, for me, because the mayor has asked me to spearhead this. And so I want to, I'm familiar with technology as a mainframe programmer a long time ago. I've been doing networks, but I haven't done, I've done only one website back in 97. I'm familiar with the underpinnings, but I want to learn this particular platform. So I set up a meeting with the team for next week so I can understand what drives costs, what things can be changed by the toolset that came with the application versus what they have to do. Like if we want to change a navigation button, position on the screen and relabel it, is that something they charge us for and they do for us? Or what can we do? So I'm trying to understand. So when I work with Susie, I'm not learning everything just in time. The other thing is that I asked her to highlight from the old scope what things were implemented successfully, let's call it a green light, what things did not get done for whatever reason, we'll call that a red light, and what things got implemented that weren't quite the way they were intended, I'll call that a yellow light. So I want to understand from the original scope where we fell short and what capacities so I can understand as a new scope comes out, I can engage with Civic Plus and get an estimate on cost from their side as we develop proposals on her side.
We could do it for two weeks. We have another meeting in two weeks.
Well, I would...
Let's, let's go start off with, she was the individual who implemented the system from June until December. So it's not as if she does not know what is in place because she implemented it. I believe that without having further information as to what needs to be done, should be done, that we as the board should have that information before you hand over the keys to the kingdom. I mean, this is now nine o'clock, and it's not on agenda. There's no documentation that has been provided to anybody as to what is the concept behind what is needed. So I am disinclined to give admin rights to a system to anybody. I mean, I don't even have admin rights to my own system, you know, let alone be, having the capability of changing everything or anything that they feel like doing. I mean, candidly, she knows the system. What does she need admin rights to do? That's the problem.
Actually, I think there were changes after she didn't have admin access any longer.
I can't answer the question.
So she can't assess it without being in the...
So there's two ways we can handle this. I could go in as admin and sit with her during the session, or I could talk to Civic Plus about putting up a duplicate of our environment for some small fee so she can assess it through a test environment that's in touch production. There are ways around your concern.
My first question is, don't, shouldn't we in advance, should we not in advance have some idea of what is needed to be done or should be examined?
But that would be, that'd be the perfect state, but I don't have, I can't tell you. And we're relying on her to tell us because I don't have the information. So it's a catch 22. It's a, it's a catch 22.
Until she looks.
Yeah, but I think here's, here's the question, right? Admin rights are dangerous because admin rights could change things in ways that are very hard to undo, right? So that's kind of number one. I understand why she needs it because I think there was a bit of a disconnect between when she started on the project and where we've gotten to now. Depending upon how Civic Plus has designed its system, you may need admin rights to get into, to be able to see what's actually happened on the backend. Because the problem is, is the way the screen is structured, and again, without getting into the technology, but a place like a Civic Plus, they build a set of frames, right? That's why the screen looks like it does. It then ties data to each of those frames, and it pulls it off of the database, and that database allows it to be able to be manipulated over time. Now, in speaking with Susie, I know there are some questions around some of the images. That's something I think is a rather easy thing to test. The bigger question would be, and it would be a risk, right, that the board needs to understand, is once you have admin rights, you can make changes. Now, Ralph, to your comment, you sit there with, with admin rights and you've got your hands on the keyboard, right? That's risk to us, right? Because again, you could screw something up. No offense, Mr. Old School Mainframe Programmer that you cited yourself as, but I think...
But I only obtained rights the night of the meeting. I didn't have rights before.
But what I'm, what I'm just saying is, is that that would be something we would need to understand. Now, one thing to ask would be to Civic Plus, look, if we wanted to, and it would not surprise me if it wouldn't be that difficult for us to create a test environment to say, look, this is a sandbox that we could do work in, right, or to look at, right? But again, it is a consideration that as an administrator to the site, you can touch and change and do all kinds of things. And I think depending upon what's changed from the point of the original design to where we're now, there could be things that you could only see are broken by having administrative rights to see how the connections are there.
So a couple of things. One is that, you know, in my, I don't, I'm a little old school with some of this language, but you, it's possible. The man I talked to today is the account manager. I asked him, is read-only access available? He didn't know the answer, so I'm meeting, I have a 2:00 appointment on Monday. That's one thing. Number two is, in the world I, when I did work with websites and I wanted to check changes I wanted to make, I would have an FTP, a file transfer protocol of the site down on the local machine so you could work locally and not affect the one on the domain. So I don't know if that's possible today, but that's also a possible solution. The only other solution I know is to ask for the admin.
No, but the problem, the problem is going to be, your FTP solution works if you're dealing with just looking, moving files around and seeing what the actual data on the file looks like. So if you wanted to go through the code, it was HTTP or XML or whatever it might be. The problem is, is that when you look at it, and you can see it through some of the administrative screens through the Civic Plus website, right? It is, it is designed to be used by a user, right, so they can actually see things. Now actually changing things and seeing how things change. And I like where your head is going because one of the questions that we raised to Civic Plus when we first entertained bringing them in is, how much of the framing, the way they designed it, how much of that is stuff that we can do ourselves and we can maintain it, whether that be putting up different images, adding calendars, doing stuff like that, versus actually going onto the screen and say, adding a button, right? Because adding those buttons changes a lot more, changes a lot more aspects of the screen. And the key thing, and this is, this is the most important thing when you're dealing with, when you're dealing with technology like this, is doing it the right way is critically important because other pieces of technology are tied to it. Now, there's also ways to kind of hack it in, right? Meaning you just put a button up there without following the right approach. And if that's the case, then actually maintaining that part of the website is much more difficult on a go-forward basis, right? And again, the bigger thing we have, and as, as the mayor cited, we need to realize that our website, whether that be the website that you have on your computer, the website you have on your phone, your iPad, that's the front door to the village. And I believe the way that Civic Plus did it, and this is the most important thing for us, is that we made it in such a way that what we have on the computer translates cleanly to your phone, translates cleanly to your iPad and beyond. So that's also where we need to make sure that all these things have actually been set up properly so that it does have that transference.
That was one of the things, Ms. Samuels, because she expressed to me that while the PDFs look good on the computer, they don't transfer down to Android or a smartphone because you have to then scroll the whole document, whereas she wants originals, she can transfer to, I forget the term she used, so that it's much more readable and user-friendly. So there are improvements that have to occur in the background through her, this, this conversion effort. There's, there's, by the way, I meant to ask the department heads, I did send out an email about this, but you should review the website page associated with your department, see if you have, besides correct information or phone numbers and stuff, see if there are any things you desire. For instance, the mayor pointed out that a resident called and couldn't find her email address. So I went out to the trustees' page, I had to scroll to get to it. So I repositioned it toward the top. You know, do we want to eliminate scrolling on pages so people don't have trouble finding things? There are a lot of little navigation things that could be part of this process, too. So I, I told the account manager that I was going to formulate some questions over the weekend that I just want to know, like you're saying, what can we change, what can, and what's going to be the cost of that? So this way, when we have the meeting on Monday, the half hour or so, we can use it most productively. I also would like the board, residents, and department heads, anyone who has any ideas about the website, if they want to see, if they have questions about things or improvements, it might just be as simple as answering the question, nothing to change. But if we're going to do phase two, let's try to get it complete so we're not doing phase three.
Okay, I have, my first question is, how many people have admin rights to the website now other than you?
It's myself, Village Clerk Altman, Denise, Deputy Village Clerk Denise Ostapow, Carissa, and Ryan Sheehan. So five people total.
Okay. As far as the urgency, and I, it wasn't even, it was a mayor of another village who couldn't find me on their website. It's a crisis. This isn't something we can wait. Things did not go roll out as they should have, and we need to immediately act. So I understand the concern, how are we going to, we can't get a scope of work until she sees what's on the backend. So how can we make that happen? She can't, you know, I guess, you could sit with her.
I could sit with her.
If that's the alternative, we could do that.
But I can give her a little time each day next week. I don't know how much time she needs. I'm sure she's going to need a lot more time than two hours a day.
Do you have any idea how...
I could, well...
...long it would take to look at the backend of a website like this?
Depends on what she's looking for.
Well, I went in there yesterday, and sometimes, it's not familiar to you, there's a dashboard, there's a, there's site tools, there's modules. It's not, it's not like it's, it's a deep cave with a lot, a lot of different areas. I'm not sure what she's looking for, though, because it looked like it was, it's set up for user management, you know? It's supposed to be an interface for a layperson to upload data and pictures and stuff. So I don't know if it's a big, like a 10-hour task for her or a couple hours, I really don't know. I could ask her. I could also talk to Civic Plus on Monday and ask them if, what would it take to just duplicate the environment on their site for her to do this? You know, maybe they'll do it at a small charge or no charge for, give me a day of it, you know? I don't know. I, I, I try to, the guy I was talking to wasn't technically involved.
We don't have the expertise in-house to do this, though it's going to be her or someone else to get a sense of what it's going to cost and start moving on it, so...
My, Mayor, my thought would be, we need a little more info. We need a higher comfort level of what has to be done, how any person that is... We need a higher comfort level of what has to be done, how any person that is not already designated to, to see, you know, our secrets, what, what they, who it should be, how, how they should be governed, et cetera. So I think, as Ralph pointed out, he made that quick change for your address, moved it right up. So obviously things can be done that are more critical, maybe that's not the right term. But maybe we should just shell this until next time and have, until the fourth and, and have some more.
I'll try to get more information.
Or make yourself available for her to come in. And I think the answer is going to be to sit with her and let her look at the back of it.
I think that's fine. The, you know, like I said, I don't, I don't see any nefarious things happening. But at the end of the day, like I said, in the absence of a contract, my giving admin rights to any system is not right. We have cyber security insurance. I don't even want them to ask me that question, do you have access? And we used to have an admin problem here throughout the village and a lot of our systems, which we've been working to clean up and correct for a number of years now. We've done a great job, so it's, it's really a protocol thing. With your permission, I would take the risk without it, I won't.
Now, let's, let's get some more detail on what we're doing, right? I, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable us giving access to her just blindly at this point because of the risk. The question I would also ask is, is it with Civic Plus, where do we stand typically? And I'm trying to remember the contract and Bruce, I don't know if you remember the details, but, but, but what do we have as far as maintenance? If this, as far as maintenance and our support from them, do we have a certain number of hours dedicated on a, on a calendar year with them? Do we? But how much, it's great for a helpline, but I'm saying if we want them to, to, because one of the ways to do this would be to actually sit down with them and say, look, we can get them on a phone call and walk through different things is what we see it. Is that included in the contract as far as from a professional services perspective, out beyond the, beyond the idea of just doing support? Because sometimes they'll have that in a contract.
I think when we ended that day training. They said anything now because it was already signed. But extra moving a button, changing.
No, but what I'm, I'm not, I'm not, what I'm suggesting is, I'm not suggesting, not changing buttons today. All we're saying is, is making someone available for us to have a conversation with them.
Well, I'm having that on Monday. I can explore all those questions with them. I don't know the, the details of the maintenance contract, but it sounds like if, if it's a simple question, the answer, if they have to do something, we pay for it. So I'm trying to figure out, is that an hourly rate?
At this point, we're not looking, at, at this point, it's too early to discuss what we do or don't want to change. Right now, the question is, I mean, I think personally, my experience, given, given Suzy's expertise in some of this stuff, she may just need a, she, she may need someone to sit there, go through a bunch of screens and then talk to the person at Civic Plus and say, this is what I see in terms of how things are connected. Do you see the same thing? Because that will also lead to some of the things we talked about with where the links, are the links where they're supposed to be? Does it transfer properly to the different venues? Because that's ultimately what we want, right? At the end of the day, and again, without getting to too, too much technicality, but what we want to make sure is that, and if you do this the right way, it doesn't matter if I pull this down via Google or pull it down via DuckDuckGo or whatever the browser is. We all want it to be consistent for everybody and PDF is now a bad word because PDFs really don't transfer right. There are other ways to actually do it so that people have that consistency, no matter what platform they're in.
Right, and that's what I learned the other night in our conversation. I also want to assure the board, although I have obtained administration rights, I know how to read only even with that power. I will not be doing anything, but the mayor has asked me to, to get the proper training. So I have the technology, training to train someone internally or support someone internally when the phase two is complete. So I will be coming up to speed on this technology. Since the last time I touched it was 1997.
So let's maybe see if you can coordinate if she's available to come in and take a look with you there.
Yeah, we can do it right here in the boardroom.
We can't get to the next step, you can't tell what is behind until she sees it.
I'll also, by, by sitting with her, I'll have a veteran standing to communicate to the board. I'm sorry, I don't, I try to have all information, but this is a black box to me right now.
Okay, all right. All right, so we'll move on to final amended site plan approval. Board authorization is requested to approve the amended site plan, which was approved by the planning commission. This is for the LNT Garden City 1200 Franklin Avenue. Approved by the planning commission on March 1st, 2023, and the architectural design review board approved the changes to the architectural elements at its March 28th, 2023 meeting. Do we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now the license agreement between LT Garden City 1200 Franklin Avenue and the Village of Garden City. The amended board authorizations requested to approve an amended license agreement between LNT Garden City 1200 Franklin Avenue and the Village of Garden City to include a new exhibit reflecting the revised configuration of the licensed area. License agreements, terms and conditions are not being changed. Village Council has approved this as to form. Is there a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
And number nine, to set a date for a public hearing, a local law to amend the village code of the Village of Garden City in relation to prohibiting certain transient dwelling uses. Introduction of the village law and discussion and set a date for a public hearing for March 18th, 2023 at 7:30.
May.
Sorry, May 18th, 2023 at 7:30. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, do we actually have a draft?
It was attached with the materials. We do not have Gary Fishberg here tonight, who drafted, did you draft it or?
Actually drafted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so we do have our resident expert. So did you have any questions? You didn't see it. All right, do we have a motion to set a date for public hearing on May 18th, 2023, 7:30? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, including the resolution.
That goes all the way to number 18, right? The consent calendar?
Yep.
Yeah, I would just say that in terms of number 17, the promenades, I hope that in connection with the starting time of 6:00 PM, some thought is given as to what time to close Seventh Street because we have had complaints from handicapped people that the earlier the closure is, that becomes the moment when they don't have access to the stores on Seventh Street anymore. So I would just ask that when the decision is made, at what time Seventh Street is going to be closed, that some consideration be given to that aspect.
I suggest possibly that the commissioner looks to reserve spaces for those individuals who need handicapped access behind Dunkin' Donuts at those handicapped spaces. Because that would give them the, in my mind, the closest ability to make it into Seventh Street.
Yeah, I think there are handicapped spaces back there, but the complaints that I was getting was from people who to have, to use those spaces that are on Seventh Street is a great luxury for them. Those handicapped spaces that are on Seventh Street. So if we close it at three instead of four, that's a whole hour earlier than, that they lose in terms of accessing the regular stores.
Dusty, I will work with Detective Hennessy and Mr. Wilton and we'll try to get that done.
Okay, thank you.
Also, DPW needs a certain amount of time to set up those barriers. So maybe we can throw more manpower at it so it'll take less time, we can start later. We can consider that.
Yeah, we'll consider it and I'll, I'll work with commissioner, come up with a plan for the parking.
Yeah, the biggest issue is when we set up that driveway. That's, that's the biggest issue, but we, we'll try to work around it. It's, do you know if the handicap spaces are closer to Franklin Avenue or all three of them?
No, the handicap spaces closer to Franklin, those two.
Oh, so we might be able to work around that.
The French Workshop and Leo's.
Yeah, so we might be able to work around that because the driveway is down a little bit, so we might be able to figure something out.
Yes, definitely.
Thanks.
Do we have any citizens' comments on non-agenda items? Mr. Wilton?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and trustees.
Good evening.
We had the Easter car parade, as we all know, we had 477 vehicles that day, right? Took two hours and 11 minutes to go down, I'm sorry, one hour and 11 minutes to go down Seventh Street. As an update, we're starting on the Belmont, so we've reached out to the Board of Health. We've done the, starting the ban process, the insurance process, the setup process, the security process. As an update on the village, I'll just kind of go through this quickly. Sparrows is a restaurant right next to Mighty Quinn. Mighty Quinn closed, I'm sorry, Sparrow is taking Mighty Quinn. Happens to be a Garden City resident, that's going to be the principal there. Noema, which is the Greek restaurant, is going to open. Murphy's Law doesn't go into effect, it should be the end of July. That's their intent, that was as of this afternoon. People's United had an application before the board for medical use. It's in abeyance right now for study. There are other tenants looking at it. The Capital One location has a food utilization looking at it as well, plus other tenants looking at it as well. And as I understand it from the landlord, they're going to rent the entire 4,700 square feet, they're not going to split it. So whoever goes in there, if they went in there as a restaurant, it would be the biggest restaurant in the village. Walk Street's name is going to be Gufa, G U F A. I don't know if that's the way to pronounce it. He's moving along rather slowly, but he's moving along.
I'm, I'm sorry, John, could you repeat that name?
G U F A.
G U F A, thank you.
East Rockaway Coffee is moving along slowly, that's the old luncheonette as we all know it, okay? And we have a vacant space that's been vacant for about three and a half years now and nobody seems to know where it is. But it's right next to Noema and Maceda and it's a little spa. So Ripco is the brokerage on it. They contacted me a couple of days ago and they said they may have another person going in there as another spa. I told them it was not as long as, not as long as it's a nail salon, we have nine nail salons in Garden City. Anyway, I have gone to the last five Nassau Council of Chamber meetings. They had not had them for almost 30 months, COVID and then the four months after what we consider post-COVID. Nassau Council, community of chambers, it's 45 chambers, so I've attended the last five. They are in the thick of the sands. I had a conversation on March 11th, for an hour and 17 minutes, I timed it, with the president of the Uniondale Chamber of Commerce. He called me absolutely 100% opposed to it. Not going to happen, not going to happen. I don't know what happened, but five days ago, he wrote an article in the newspaper extolling the wonderfulness of the Sands Casino. This is the same fellow that spoke to me on the, that evening for an hour. He also went into a very detailed explanation about how Nassau Council, Nassau County Community College is now pursuing academic pursuit in hospitality, hotel management and coordinated other curriculum for the, for the hospitality. So Nassau Community College seems to be on board.
Excuse me, John, did he tell you where he got the funding for that? That's a rhetorical question.
I'm well aware of that. But the president of the South Ozone Park Chamber of Commerce was wonderful at the last meeting. So he got up and he's been the president for longer than most. He owns a liquor store, very nice, down-to-earth, honest guy. And he said, everything they told us, none of it came true. This is in front of 45 other chambers. None of it came true. They said they'd hire our people, they did. But soon as the unions came in, the unions said our people can't work there unless they join the unions. They promised us there'd be no increase in crime, there's an increase in crime. Promised us to be no increase in drug use, there's an increase in drug use. They promised that, that would develop the economic vitality of our downtown, it's done the complete opposite. He was extremely dramatic, very declarative, very affirmative and well spoken for his communication skill sets.
I'm sorry, John, where was he from?
South Ozone Park, Aqueduct, the.
The Aqueduct, okay, thank you.
And, and put a lot of emotion into it. I mean, he was really a down-to-earth, honest guy. So I was invited. The Sands has a young lady named Reese. And she worked with Rexler and she worked with Wang on the past two development sites. She has them convinced she's the go-to gal in Nassau County to get this done. So they have, this is the Sands, they have developed a small business work group, sustainability work group, a community partnership work group, a workforce development work group, a transportation work group, an infrastructure work group. So I attended the small business work group last week. There were 21 people in attendance from 21 chambers of commerce. Mayor Patterson was there and they were, this young lady Reese chaired it and she was explaining the benefits of the casino to the downtowns. So I wrote three A's when I was at the meeting. Some of the people in the meeting were in awe, some were absolutely ambivalent and then the balance was angry. So I'm watching this group of other people that run chambers and it's not just presidents of chambers, it's treasurers, it's past presidents or whatever the case may be. So the Sands has a full court press out there with the Nassau Council of Chambers. The fellow that runs it, the president, his name is Frank Camaro. Nice guy, neutral, has not endorsed it. They have approached me and other chambers to endorse them, et cetera, et cetera. Of course, I don't know anybody who does it. Uniondale's on board, Hempstead is on board. Other surrounding communities, they claim that they, meaning this young lady Reese is claiming that they may be on board. So understand that as, as I've been told by other chambers, that the Sands is in a position and has been, and I don't know this to be true, spreading economic growth to different organizations throughout the community, communities and spreading it generously to, to win over the general sentiment. So I just want you to know that this Nassau Council of Chambers, which probably none of you probably aware even existed, I don't know if you did or you didn't. But as I said, they haven't been, they haven't been active for 30 months and now all of a sudden they're in the thick of things. And it's, it's, it's the Sands kind of trying to pull everything together. As far as the promenade goes, just so you know, last year, we closed the street exactly at five o'clock last year. Anybody that was in a handicap spot, we made certain that they didn't, we, as Ken can tell you, I'm sorry, Commissioner can tell you that our biggest issue on Friday is making sure that we safely get the vehicles off the street, which always presents a problem. Somebody goes into the store, they forget, they come out, we have people from other villages that come here. And in effect, we really have to follow homeland security rules. We have to make sure that there's no vehicles on the street, God forbid there's explosives or whatever the case may be. So we're very sensitive to being extremely careful with anybody that has any issues about parking. So we make certain and we just, what we'll do if somebody is in a handicap spot or anything, we'll just move the barricades, help them move out. It's not an issue, so it's, it's, I don't think it's presented a problem. I don't know why the, the merchants who I know personally, deal with them regularly, say we close at three o'clock. I can't understand it. I, I'm there physically myself personally, we close at five o'clock, that is when we close, okay? We don't close at four, we don't close at three, we close at five. That's when I actually physically close the street. So that concludes it, but I will tell you, the Sands thing with the Nassau Council of Chambers is something that I think we as a, as a unit and as a, as a village should be concerned with. I'm very grateful and I think we should be grateful that the fellow that chairs it, it's the president, is a very neutral guy. He, he's a down-to-earth, hands-on workman and he's a great guy and he's been very, very neutral. But, but this, this group is very progressive and they're, I was told that, I don't know how much merit this has. I was told one of the reasons Garden City is in their course hairs is they've been told, I met with the executive vice president from the Sands himself. He came to Garden City and met with us. They were told they have to get the Republican Party in Garden City to be on board to get this passed. That was the comment that was passed. I said, well, I don't know. I said, I, I'm not a political division, I just, it is what it is. So anyway, that's an update on the Sands and I think the promenades will be a success. I think there'll be a home run. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if you've come out yet or if the chamber plans to come out and make a statement in opposition. I think those are all, a lot of groups are doing that.
You just made a proclamation, so it's very easy for me now to concur with the proclamation of the village. They have asked me, the, at that meeting, they asked me to make a statement. They did a press release the next day, I was very cautious, made no statement. They've made three press releases after we had meetings with them and I made certain that our chamber and our village were not in those press releases. and I made certain that our chamber and our village were not in those press releases. I made certain that no, and I said to them, "You cannot put us on Instagram, Facebook. You cannot put us out. You cannot do it on any other mechanism, any, any media outlet." And I was very clear, and luckily I had counsel with us, so we, they were very understanding. But, uh, they understand us. I mean, I said to them, as a, having been involved with the chamber almost thirty years, I said to them, I said, "Listen, we've had a casino here for thirty years. It's called Roosevelt Field. If you open a business on Seventh Street in Garden City, as the crow flies, it's one point two miles away." So when somebody comes here, the last thing they're going to want is another mechanism drawing power from this area. I said, "It just makes no business sense to anybody." Listen, the, the fellow that I spoke to was the executive vice president Sands. I checked him. Wharton graduate. He knew every adjective, every adverb. His eloquence in his speech, if you want, he was amazing. The guy was absent. I actually said to him as a note of humor, I was at my family's house, uh, for Christmas with the, uh, the, my nephew, all thirty, thirty. They're all doing draft games, all right? And I said to him, you know, "How can you not say that gambling has an effect?" And he says, "Oh, John, we've done tremendous research on this. Sports gambling and casino gambling are two different levels of addiction." And I said to him, "Okay, but what if I talk to the addiction guys? What are they going to tell me if they tell me on the other side?" They have an answer for everything, and they are here. I went out with two politicians. I won't mention who they were, two different, two different spectrums. One said, "Absolutely never going to happen." The other one said, "A done deal." So, you know, we are where we are as a community. But I will make certain that it's certainly, and I will at the next meeting. I'm going to a meeting on April twenty-seventh with the Nassau Council of Chambers, and I believe they understand. I told them that, that I would be coming to a meeting and I would respond after the meeting. So we will all be singing from the same sheet music.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Kathy O'Hara. I'm, I live at, uh, sixty-seven Hilton. And, um, I'm glad Mr. Wilton got up because I was wondering, I mean, you said that it's going to be a great success, the promenades. For some of us, especially those that live on Seventh Street, it's not a success. It's a worry. It's a concern. Quite a few of the women that live in my building have, have, um, reservations about going to the promenade because they've been accosted by some of the teenagers that, um, hang out on the promenade nights. That's number one. And number two, I think they, the nights that there are the promenades, I can understand July, June, and July, but I don't think during the month of August that the activity and the, um, the people that come are people that are really interested in, in, um, using our community or, or using the stores and all of that. By the time August comes, the residents in Garden City have gone on to the September, and they're, they're not enjoying, uh, Seventh Street. Seventh Street turns out to be a hangout for people that are looking to cause trouble. And I just like, actually, Mr. Wilton, I'd like for some of the women in my building to contact you so that you can hear firsthand some of the issues that they had. They were accosted last year. And, um, Commissioner Jackson, I'm sure you've heard about those situations, and it's, it's not fun. It's not fun to go out on promenade nights for some of the residents of, of Garden City. And I think we all should be, you know, made aware of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. We did, um, hear the concerns, and the schedule was cut in half for this year, uh, to address that.
And I think what we'll do is, um, safety of our residents is paramount, right? There's nothing that is more important than, and I think Commissioner Jackson and his, his department do yeoman's work as far as doing it. And to the mayor's comment, when we met with Mr. Wilton about the promenades, I think, yes, there's a, there's a certain segment of our community that like it. I think we unfortunately are the victims of our own success, because I agree with you completely. I went to every one of them last year. Summer, the, the Belmont is in its own category, right? That puts us, helps, puts us on the map. I agree with you completely. As you get later in the summer, there are fewer and fewer Garden City people, and there are more other folks. And I think one of the challenges you have is that we've become a place where if you've got a thirteen, fourteen-year-old, you know, boy and or girl, you drop them off on Seventh Street because you know it's a place that they can go and hang out and do what have you. And thirteen and fourteen-year-old kids do what thirteen and fourteen-year-old kids do. So I think we took the step to step down the number. I think we're going to work with Commissioner Jackson and his, uh, and his officers to monitor the situation. Hopefully decreasing the number is going to improve safety for everyone. But we will watch, right? And if things do, you know, I think the first thing is that by making it not something that's an every weekend thing, it'll become a little more, you know, it'll help part of it. But we'll have to monitor even further. And if, and if things do, uh, head in the wrong direction, we'll have to take other actions, right? Because again, the safety is paramount. But thank you for your comments.
Yeah, I would follow up on that and say, as Deputy Mayor Marcy Adam said, that we have reduced these, uh, in number. We've tried to be responsive to the residents' complaints, not just about safety concerns, but also residents on, uh, Franklin Avenue apartment buildings who are concerned about the noise every Friday night. And so now they're every other, uh, week. And your comment about the August, there is a qualitative difference in the promenades between August and the earlier times of the summer is a good one. I hadn't heard it before, and we'll be watching the promenades this summer to, to see if we think that bears out. So that's valuable input from you, so thank you.
Any other resident comments? Yes.
Hello again, Bob Morris, Twenty-Eight Grove. Uh, I found myself recently unemployed as the result of the disbanding of the subcommittees for St. Paul's. During that time that I was part of the committee, I, um, got some information, technical information, accumulated that, uh, together, and, uh, I was waiting to, you know, maybe give a report or something on it. Since that I won't be able to do that, I made several copies of the information that I came up with as a supplement for all the members of the board and the village administrators so that you could look it over and become more familiar and educated in the relationship to St. Paul's. Because I know, from what I understand, you're going to be taking a more active part in it, in St. Paul's. So I like to provide you with this information. There's no point in me sitting on it. I mean, uh, so, uh, I like to be able to hand that out, take a look at it, uh, take what you want from it. And, uh, it's, it's a good idea to be as informed as the person who's giving you that information. Because if that person has more knowledge than you, they control the show. So it's really advisable that you, uh, become attuned to what's going on so that you're able to answer, ask, uh, legitimate questions and be aware of what the answers are. All right, so we can hand this out. I'll give it to Mr. Swazie, and I made enough for all of you.
Thank you very much.
Not billing you for it.
Just, uh, a brief update on that, just, um, we have a report we got from Westerman. That was the culmination of, um, you know, extensive work by the St. Paul's Committee. And I have gotten input from all the trustees, um, with what questions they have and clarification the like. Having spent the time going through the whole report, I compiled those questions into one document for Westerman and have, um, provided him our questions, and we'll hear back and move forward from there. But going forward, we'll all be, um, involved.
Okay, if I can help you on that, as I say, I went through a lot of, of study online and all that sort of thing. I'm pretty good at looking things up.
Thank you.
And, uh, uh, I hope I made enough. I think it went shy, but, um, okay, all right, so, uh, you have any idea when a Westerman meeting will be taking place, the next one?
I don't have a date. It depends on, I believe it was about twelve questions that I had. And, um, until he goes through them, I don't know if they'll require more work or they'll be easy answers. So once we hear back and whether they'll require a further meeting or he'll just be able to answer them. So I can't, until I speak to them, I can't tell you when it will be or how, um-
So I'm actually seeing, knowing, as, if you're going to have the meeting, when is it going to take place? And who can attend the meeting and who can answer, ask questions? Whether it be like a, uh, a meeting like the, when you do the budget meetings where you just have people sitting there doing, and the, the people in the audience can't really say anything? Or will you have more inter, you know, interchange of information? I'll be waiting for that. I appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Yeah, you'll, we'll keep you informed, and you, you can be sure that you'll know what, what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
I promise that.
Oh, by the way, uh, I wish to, uh, uh, welcome everyone who hasn't been here before and took, taking on this task of, uh, presenting themselves to the public. Very hard to deal with the public. I spent thirty years dealing with the public, and believe me. I get it. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Gray, again, still at forty-four Cambridge. Didn't move. Follow up this question in a narrow way. Last week, I wrote a letter to the paper advocating in a sense that the concept of a park be evaluated in reference to your further dialogue with Westerman. My suggestions were only suggestions. I do not want the park to be named after me in any shape or form or any concept thereof to be named after me. I had a very nice discussion with Mr. Blake before, and he made me realize that these ideas, a bandshell, for example, I don't know how big it should be, but I know from speaking to people, many people at the pool last summer with Mr. Salem, that many people said, "That would be a good idea. It would be nice to know that our teenagers are singing or performing at a bandshell in a park as opposed to smoking something under the Denton Avenue Bridge." So I offered that suggestion and the others in my letter as concepts that perhaps can be discussed with Mr. Westerman. I asked him at either the board meeting or the town hall if he evaluated the park concept that was presented to be fifteen million dollars, and he said, "No." So I therefore think that the bulldozer is out of the garage. It is a number. I don't think that number means anything. I'd like to know what it should mean. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, do you want the Greenwood Circle to be named after you?
No, you and I both know it is the oval of tranquility and solace.
Okay, we'll go.
And I have a further report on that, if I may, just two seconds. I was there today. I think the grass on the slope going down towards New York Park Road, with all the sun it gets, doesn't get well irrigated, either zoya grass, and I know there may be some dispute on, with some of the trustees, or how good that is or not good, Bermuda grass. I've been doing a little research because I'm trying to interest in parks now, but I think something's going to have to be addressed. Otherwise, it's going to look not so good. Thank you, and I, I will give you a further report.
I appreciate it. I know you will. Thank you.
You bet.
I'm Carl Russo from Six Edge Mill Road. I, I just want to comment on the promenade. It, it's something that I really never go to, but this year I went, last, uh, summer I went twice. And my cousin's daughter from England was with her baby. And it really was something to see, and in that in a good way. It really wasn't. The kids were rampant all over, and, uh, and I said they were high school kids, but talking to different people that I know, they, they were the middle school kids, which I, I was very much surprised. And, um, you know, it was just really disgusting. It really was, is all I can say. And, uh, it's something that, uh, you know, they're on their bicycles, they're riding all over the place and everything, and, uh, harassing people and climbing and jumping and, uh, you know, these, the, the, the problem is, there are children. You know, they're not outsiders. They're people who live here, and it's their kids. While the mothers and fathers are having dinner at Water Zui and the other restaurants, the kids are running all over Seventh Street. I mean, recently I heard in New Jersey, there's a mall that is saying anybody under the age of eighteen has to be with a older, an older person on the weekends because of all the havoc that these kids are doing in malls and, and, uh, other places. So it's not, it's not only a problem here, it's a problem all over. And, um, just like everything else, we want to point the finger at everything, but the problem is the, the home life and, and the parents. And they're the ones that have to know that what's going on, they have to be responsible for. And I, and I think that's something that has to be, um, mentioned, whether through the PTA or other, other organizations, that it's their kids that are causing this problem. Like I said, I live on Edge Mill Road, and during the winter, uh, kids cut holes in fences to go, uh, ski, you know, with, uh, uh, I used to say garbage pail covered down the mountains and stuff like that. And, uh, you know, they would all cut in into the golf course. And, um, I was talking to one, one day, uh, somebody that was fixing the fence and everything. And I said to the guy, I said, "You know, why does the golf course allow this? Why do they allow all of these, uh, parents and kids to come, you know, onto the golf course?" And they said, "Because basically, they're the children of the members." And, and this is, they're not going to say anything. They're just going to allow it happen. But it's the same thing with the Village, with the promenade and stuff like that. These are our children, our grandchildren, and i- it's a shame because the, there, there's no control, and we have to have control. Thank you.
May I mention the cartoon from Pogo? "I Met the Enemy, and They Is Us."
Yeah. Well, you're right. You're right.
When, what part of the year was it that your, uh, was it daughter who came over from England?
Yeah, um, I guess it was, it was warm. It might have been towards the end of July, something like-
The reason I mention is because similar to others, uh, I was there with my wife, and one of the kids on the bicycles, uh, pretty much almost knocked her over. Then I had a, a conversation with the commissioners, the commissioner, and it was decided that the bicycles would not be on Seventh Street.
Yeah, it's good.
So the question then becomes is, and, and while a number of the miscreants, if I may use that word loosely, were from Village, there was postings on other websites, and kids were coming from other communities. Hence the reason for, for rallying, if I may use that word, the bicycles off Seventh Street.
Sure, Mr.?
Sure, uh, yeah, last year it did, there's like bike groups now. They have, it's, it's all done by social media, and, uh, they belong to all the, our community and also surrounding communities. So, uh, as the year, uh, progressed last summer, it got, uh, more and more intended. Um, and, uh, we had to put more and more people out. So, uh, this year we'll be monitoring again, and, uh, we did ban bikes. We put the signs up. That helped to some degree. Uh, when it gets, gets pretty crowded, uh, we get strained a little bit on, on, because the kids go behind the two stores, the, oh, parking fields behind both sides of the stores. But, uh, you know, we'll, we'll do what we have to do. We'll put what we have to, uh, do, put out there, uh, personnel-wise, and we'll do what we can. But, uh, it is a, um, it is many different groups and many different communities involved.
And I'm sure you're right, but it, it, there are a lot of kids from the area and stuff. And talking to different people, they, they have, that it was their, you know, from, within Garden City too.
Oh, you're right. There are, there are many children from Garden City, but there, it is a group now, but they hang out and they go social media. And not just here. They, uh, they do group rides in, uh, Miniola, West Hempstead. Uh, I don't know if you've seen them. They ride down South Avenue by Adult Flight. So we've been watching them. Uh, we, uh, caught quite a few lately. And, um, we just made inroads with damage to St. Paul's property, where, um, five of the individuals we arrested were parted up by group. So, uh, we, we made some inroads, and hopefully that will help us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I might add one quick comment, uh, it, this sounds like, uh, the, the promenades are pretty bleak. I don't, I don't think that they are, and I think that the, the chamber, you know, should be congratulated for, for, you know, doing their planning. And it is an advertisement for the Village. It should be a fun occasion for us, and it, and it should be fun for- It should be a fun occasion for us, and it, and it should be fun for folks who are from other villages. It sounds like certainly the, the policing may be stepped up. Parenting should be stepped up. That's always a challenge. But I think traditionally and historically, the promenades have been a good thing. I was particularly in favor of, of cutting them back to two a month, not necessarily for safety reasons, but for other reasons, making them more special, et cetera. So Mrs. O'Hara would certainly understand what, you're, you're shaking your head, but, but I, there is sympathy, and I think you can take confidence that there will be action based on, on what you have said tonight. But I don't think we need to indict the promenade itself. I think we need to handle the problem. And if we can't handle the problem, then we'll do something to the promenades. But my belief is, and confidence, is that we will get control of the promenades, and they'll be fun, and there'll be events that we'll all want to attend. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from residents on non-agenda items? Anyone in the room? Anyone on Zoom with a question on a non-agenda item? We have Maureen with her hand up.
Go ahead, Maureen.
Any other hands up online, on Zoom? All right, so there are no other questions? Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?